Good evening. Today is Wednesday, August 20th, 2025. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District. Can I have a motion to call the meeting to order? Pete, second. Joel, all in favor? Okay. And now, next can I have a meeting to convene an executive session?
Motion?
Motion. Pete, second. Joel, all in favor? Okay, so we are going to go to executive session and we should be back around 7:30. Okay. Welcome back, everybody. We just came back from executive session and our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight and for watching at home. Are, we are going to start with board comments. Sorry, Joel, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Pete?
I don't have anything either. Just hope everybody's enjoying the summer and getting ready for the new school year. But no, I'm good. Thank you.
The only thing I want to say is that we've had a very eventful few weeks here at the school. We now have our full administration team in place. We have Mr. Chris Fiori as our high school principal, Dr. Melissa Quackenbush as our Director of Curriculum and Technology, Ms. Suzette Deutsch as our Special Ed Director, and of course, still John Marash, Peter Kilgallen, Andrew Calasuno, and Scott DeBellas to round out our administration team. I'm really excited that under Mr. Roberts' leadership, that we are going to have a fantastic school year. In our house, we're already in the middle of the transition because football started today and all of our welcome back, get your papers, when forms filled out, emails went out. And so, we've already started the transition and really looking forward to just a great start to the school year. And that's it. And I hope everyone's enjoying the rest of their summer. Ben? Comments from the superintendent?
All right. Thank you, Madam President. So, we've had a busy month and a half since I started July 1st and working with the administrative team. We're very fortunate, as Hallerin said, to bring on a full administrative group, Mr. Fiori, Ms. Deutsch, Dr. Quackenbush, and the current existing administrators have all gelled together the first several weeks that we've, we've had a chance to get to, to our planning for the upcoming school year. So, in a blink of an eye, August is come and we're, we're knocking on September and the arrival of our students, which is fantastic. So, even today, we were doing a lot of pre-planning for our Superdance Conference Day, which will have two days with our teachers coming up right after the Labor Day. Also, on the horizon, we have, our students are starting to come back for orientations next week for 6th grade and 8th grade at the middle high school here. Additionally, as Mr. Hallerston also said, our, our students are starting to come back into the works. We had students taking Regents exam yesterday. So, congratulations to all of our students on their hard work preparing for those Regents. I was in here watching some of our students take the history Regents yesterday afternoon and they're working hard. So, wish them well on the results they've worked hard for and that the outcome is what they, what they hoped. And whether it's a great improvement or passing for the first time, we're excited for those scores to come out for those students. Additionally, about our, as it's been shared, my, Ms. Haller and our students are starting with the athletics next week. Monday is our official return of Section 1 Athletics and our varsity and JV sports will be coming back. So, we're excited to have our students participating. And thank you to the board for previously approving our strength and conditioning coach. We've had about, if you look at the field, sometimes 45 to 50 youngsters out there running, lifting, doing all sorts of strength and conditioning, practice drills to prepare for the season. And that'll continue throughout the rest of the fall, winter, and spring. And it's great to see our student athletes participating with our strength and conditioning coach and preparing for the season. And also, students that are just going to be interested in health and fitness have that opportunity. So, I think that's a great addition to our programming. One of the things I wanted to thank our PTA president. She's partnering with me to do a meet and greet for myself as new superintendent and the new members of our administrative team. So, mark your calendars. I'll send out a follow-up communication to our families, but we're hosting it here in the library on September 2nd, I believe, 7:00 PM. Quote me on that. I think that's what I have for the notes there. So, Mr. Fiori, Ms. Deutsch, our Special Education Director, and Dr. Quackenbush will be here. As many other administrators may attend, but just a good chance to meet and greet some of our new administrative leaders and get to know many of our stakeholders. So, very excited about that. And that's about it for the first part. A little later on, I'll be talking about our, the cell, the cellphone, the internet-enabled device ban that always coming out. As of August 1st, you may recall, Governor Hochul passed the new law. The board was responsive and passed the policy for us. So, tomorrow or on Friday, the finalization, we're, we're sending our individual building letters out from each principal about the logistics of how it'll impact our students here at Tuckahoe and with some frequently asked questions, as well as some of the logistics. The, the basic premise that we're going to be using at the 6th through 12th level is we're using our lockers as our defined storage compartment that students will be expected to put their device in and the different procedures. So, our administrators will work closely with the teachers. They're going to need some training on Superdance Conference Day. And then, of course, with our students, when they arrive, we'll be doing some grade-level meetings, getting them up to speed on expectations and getting everybody on the same page about how this new procedure and some of these protocols will take place and shape when, when students arrive after Labor Day. So, that's it for me right now, Madam President. I may have some additional comments at the end.
Thank you very much. Comments from the business manager? Faith?
Hi. Good evening. So, a lot has happened over the summer, so I'd love to give everyone an update. I'll start with construction. So, at the middle high school, we completed the replacement of the T-shaped roof, which is the oldest part of the building. We also did major masonry, masonry repairs along the front facade of both the middle school and the high school. The fieldside wall, which is right behind us, also had some major masonry work. And we did work in the courtyards. In the tunnel under this building, we replaced all of the old domestic water pipes, which had severely deteriorated, along with steam pipes that were damaged, were also replaced. We also put new steam traps throughout the building. On tonight's agenda, there is a change order for additional plumbing work that will take place in the parking lot and alongside Wenoye Boulevard to fix some drainage issues in that area due to damage and collapsed pipes. Ventilation is added in our boiler room, which was much needed. And repairs were made to address water intrusion in the gym floor on the fieldside entrance. We also installed at the middle high school our brand-new, state-of-the-art bell clock and PA system. So, if you're here, you can look up and see one of our new clocks and all the classrooms got new clocks and PA systems. So, really high-tech. We are also adding additional security cameras here at the middle high school and that will be completed this week. And just because that wasn't enough, with ConEd's help, we were able to complete an emergency replacement of a transformer because we just needed to do some more. So, that was an emergency and we were able to complete that as well. At Cottle, about 30 doors were replaced, along with some smaller plumbing and minor repairs. We also did some landscaping work in front of Cottle, in front of the new cafeteria windows and along the painted portion of Si Wenoye Boulevard. And alongside all of this work that we did, our facilities team has been working incredibly hard to get every classroom ready for the first day of school and, and the whole building, not just the classrooms. Their work is essential and we deeply appreciate the effort and pride they put into making our buildings safe, clean, and welcoming. We've also had a really busy summer with technology, with the support of Southern Westchester BOSI's Lower Hudson Regional Information Center and our onsite network specialists who have been working really hard. Every district desktop and laptop is being replaced. So, they also processed the delivery of 300 new Chromebooks for students. And just last week, all of our network switches were replaced. These upgrades are critical and they give us reliable and they give us the reliability and security we need for instruction and innovation in the classroom and day-to-day operations. This week, our auditors are onsite wrapping up the final fieldwork for the 2024-25 year-end audit. And as we prepare to welcome students back, families can now see their transportation information in the parent portal. We also recently shared some news about changes to the school breakfast and lunch program. A blast was sent out. So, under new state legislation, every student, every public school student is now eligible for one free breakfast and one free lunch each day. We're excited about this. We're also going to be working with Armar to introduce new menu items and tastings, monthly tastings for our students. And in the email we sent out, we included a lot of information on the free lunch program and free breakfast and what makes up a free meal and what the components are. So, there's a lot of information there. And finally, this summer, we welcomed our new administrative team members and each of them brings a strong experience and fresh perspectives to their roles. And I'm very excited for the energy and the new leadership that we have. And I just look forward to working closely with all of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Faith. You have been super busy.
Yes.
I, I always say that the business office keeps the school running through the summer, but you really, I mean, that was a lot of stuff. And I forgot, when I listed all the administrators, to mention you and I'm so sorry. We would be absolutely lost without your leadership and expertise. So, thank you for all of your work. And thank you to the Facilities Department because the building really looks fantastic considering all of the work that we have gone through. And I really appreciate all that you guys have done throughout the summer with all the extra work that's been going on. Okay. Comments from community partners? This is a new section that we have. We used to just have it where it was just for the PTA and now we are inviting it for our community partners, which are the PTA, the New SEPTA Committee, and the Athletic Council. So, it's a time for them to come up when they're here. They don't have to every time, but to give a little report. And I don't believe that tonight we have anybody. So, we are up to the first recognition of the audience. And this, as a reminder, is just on items which are in the agenda. If anybody has anything? No? Okay. So, next is the consent agenda. Approve the consent agenda. Resolves that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District motions to approve Consent Agenda Items 2 through 6. Do I have a motion? Pete, second. Joel, all in favor? Okay. Business of the board. Adopt the District-wide Safety Plan. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby adopts the District-wide Safety Plan for the 2025-2026 school year. This plan can be found on our website, correct? Yes, can be found on our website. We did do the required 30-day hearing time and so now it is time for us to approve it. Do I have a motion? Pete, second. Joel, any comments? Okay. All in favor? Okay. Adopt Policy 8113: Extreme Heat Condition Days. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District adopts Policy 8113: Extreme Heat Condition Days. This is, New York State law now requires all public schools to have excessive heat policy to protect students and staff from unstable indoor temperatures. School must monitor classroom temperatures and take action when they reach 82 degrees Fahrenheit, including relocation students if the temperature reaches 88 degrees Fahrenheit. The law ensures that schools are prepared to respond to extreme heat and maintain safe learning environments. Do I have a motion? Pete, second. Joel, all in favor? Adopt Policy 6830: Travel Reimbursement. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District adopts Policy 6830: Travel Reimbursement. The district is revising its travel and expense reimbursement policy to align with current standards and ensure compliance. Meal reimbursements will now follow the U.S. General Service Administration per diem rates based on travel location. Sales tax on meals consumed during authorized business travel is reimbursable in accordance with the New York State OSC Opinion 80-163. Gratuities are reimbursable up to 18%. Meals that are already included in conference fees will not be reimbursed and no reimbursement will be provided for snacks and other items purchased outside of designated meal allowances. These changes will review, were reviewed and discussed with the Audit and Finance Committee. Do I have a motion? Pete, second. Joel, all in favor? Okay. First reading of Policy 8520: Free and Reduced School Meals. As part of the governor's approved budget, which provides for universal school meals, our district is now participating in the USDA's Provision 2 Program to offer free breakfast and lunch to all students regardless of income eligibility. This marks a change from our previous policy, which followed the national, the standards for National School Lunch Program and required families to apply annually for meal benefits and qualify through direct certification. Although completing a free and reduced-priced meal application is no longer required to receive the free meals, the district encourages families to do so, as qualifying may make them eligible for other important benefits and programs. Do I have a motion?
You have only, this is the first reading.
Oh, I'm sorry. Right, first reading. So, I, one thing I just want to say is it is still really important to fill out the free and reduced forms if you qualify for the guidelines. Because it does, the part of the plan for the governor is to get people who qualify more benefits. So, she's really pushing for districts to still collect the forms, even though we are going to be giving one free breakfast and one free lunch per day. All right. Approve a tax certiorati. Resolved in the matter of tax certiorati proceedings instituted by NIP, NIPPI LLC affecting properties located at 103 Lake Avenue and 97 Lake Avenue, Town of East Chester, and designated as Section 32, Block 4, Lot 4, and Section 32, Block 4, Lot 6, respectively. The Tuckahoe Board of Education hereby approves the refund of school taxes in the amount of $5,561.23. Do I have a motion? Pete, second. Joel, all in favor? Okay. Approve a tax certiorati judgment. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District in the matter of tax certiorati proceeding, proceedings instituted by 97 Lake Avenue Realty Partners LLC affecting properties located at 103 Lake Avenue and 97 Lake Avenue, Town of East Chester, and designated as Section 32, Block 4, Lot 4, and Section 32, Block 4, Lot 6, respectively. Hereby approves the refund of school taxes in the amount of $8,942.36 and whereas pursuant to the resolution of the Board under Section 3651-1-A of the Educational Law that the Tuckahoe Union Free School District, District established a reserve fund known as the Tax Certiorati Reserve Fund to be used for the purpose of paying judgments and claims for a tax certiorati proceedings in accordance with Article 7 of the Real Property Tax Law. And whereas, the district is liable for a tax certiorati proceedings in the amount of $8,942.36. It is hereby resolved that the district hereby authorizes an increase of a 1964-400 refund of real property taxes by $8,942.36 and a decrease of a 864 tax certiorati reserves by $8,942.36 to be used in the accordance with applicable laws for the purpose of paying legal fees, expenses, and tax certiorati judgments. Do I have a motion? Pete, second. Joel, all in favor? Okay. Approve an agreement. Super long. I bet you're so happy.
I don't, I don't miss it. I do not miss it.
Okay. Approve an agreement. Whereas, four BOSIs, Onodaga, Cortland, Madison, BOSIs, Albany, Schgoher, Schgoher, Schenectady, Saratoga, BOSIs, Madison, Oneida, BOSIs, and Broome, Tioga, BOSIs have collaborated with the, have collaborated and entered into Article 5, General Municipal Law Intermunicipal Agreement for the purpose of improving the vendor management and data security and privacy practices for school districts and/or BOSIs statewide, known as the RIC-1 Risk Operations Center, the ROC. Whereas, the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District, through its affiliation with the locally-based Regional Information Center, participates with the ROC and desires, yeah, with the ROC and desires for the 25-26 fiscal year to authorize the ROC to enter into data privacy agreements and related exhibits, DPAs, with vendors and third-party contractors that include the requirements of and compliance with New York State Education Law, Section 2D, and Part 121 Regulation, collectively, Ed Law 2D, related to student personally identifiable information, P2, and certain teacher and principal APPR data. Whereas, the ROC also partners with New York State SED to access For Learning Student Data Privacy Consortium, SDPC, and the Education Cooperative, TEC, to negotiate and approve Ed Law 2D compliant DPAs. Whereas, the DPAs are presented to school districts and BOSIs for final execution and do not require the expenditure of funds beyond those budgeted. And be it resolved, Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District authorizes the attorneys designated by the ROC to negotiate and approve of DPAs for software and/or technology resources. And be it further resolved, that the Tuckahoe Union Free School District Board of Education grants the ROC and its designated attorneys an authority to negotiate the terms and condition of DPAs and take such actions as to effectuate and purposes and intent of this resolution. Do I have a motion? Pete, second. Joel, all in favor?
Rolls right off the tongue, doesn't it?
Yeah. Okay. Approve an agreement. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District approve the agreement to maximum, to maximum tennis development zone for the rental of tennis courts from August 25th, sorry, from August 25th to August 30th, 2025, in the amount not to exceed $1,710. A motion? Pete, second. Joel, I just have one question. So, after August 30th, is this only because that like ends August and then in September, we're going to go someplace else? Do you know? Do you have an idea, Ben?
I'll have to check with this because I think this is a fall rental for this space.
Yeah. I'm just curious where we're going to go after, once September starts. Yeah.
Don't we go to Leewood or is that off limits now?
We haven't gone to Leewood in a while because it was under construction.
Yeah, but I think it's all.
And now, all right.
I'll find out.
We have been going to Maxim. That's why I'm just curious why it's changing. But, okay. All in favor? Approve an agreement. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby approves the settlement agreement by and between the Tuckahoe Union Free School District and Corey Morris, PC, and authorizes the Superintendent of Schools to execute the same and approves the payment of monies contained therein. Do I have a motion? Pete, second. Joel, all in favor? Approve a transportation contract. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby authorizes the shared transportation agreement between the Tuckahoe Union Free School District and Ardsley Union Free School District for the provision of transportation for a student attending an out-of-district placement for the summer 2025-26, not to exceed $7,000. Do I have a motion? Pete, second. Joel, all in favor? Approve a piggyback transportation contract. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby authorizes the Tuckahoe Union Free School District to piggyback off the contract by and between Royal Coach Lines and the Ardsley Union Free School District for the provision of transportation for one student to and from Tuckahoe Union Free School District and Green Chimney School, located in Carmel, Hamlet, New York. At a cost not to exceed $42,000 for the 25-26 school year, the superintendent is authorized to sign the necessary paperwork to effectuate the board's approval of this transportation agreement. Motion? Pete, second. Joel, all in favor? Approve a cooperative purchasing contract. Whereas, the district is a member of the Interlocal Purchasing System, which provides competitively bid contracts in compliance with New York State procurement laws. And whereas, the Inter, Interlocal Purchasing System, USA Contract 22010702, awarded to Precision Roofing, offers roofing services at favorable pre-bidding prices. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District approves the use of Precision Roofing under TIPS USA Contract 22010702 and authorizes superintendent or designate to take all necessary steps to execute such procurement. Do I have a motion? Pete, second. Joel, all in favor? Approve a proposal. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby approves Freeman Mechanical, Inc. to perform plumbing and general construction repairs at Cottle Elementary School at a total cost not to exceed $17,348.79. Do I have a motion? Pete, second. Joel, all in favor? Approve budget transfers. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District approve the attached budget transfers. The budget transfers are listed in the public section of the agenda, if anybody is curious for what they are. Do I have a motion? Pete, second. Joel, all in favor? Approve an intermunicipal agreement. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District approve the intermunicipal agreement dated August 20th, 2025, and authorize the Superintendent of Schools to execute the agreement with the Town of East Chester for a school resource officer and authorizing payment thereunder. Do I have a motion? Pete, second. Joel, all in favor? Thank you to the Town of East Chester for providing us with an SRO. Approve a settlement agreement. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby authorizes the settlement of the pending due process hearing request involving student number 12303, based on the terms set forth in the proposed stipulation of settlement reviewed and in executive session and hereby authorizes the superintendent to execute said stipulation of settlement. Do I have a motion? Pete, second. Joel, all in favor? Approve a change order. Whereas, a proposed change order has been presented to the Board of Education in connection with the school district's capital project at the Tuckahoe Middle School, High School for Freeman Mechanical, Inc., Freeman, to be replaced, to replace the drainage pipes in the parking lot of the Tuckahoe Middle School, High School to a new catch basin in exchange for an increase in Freeman's base contract amount of $59,115. The change order. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District authorizes and approves the school district to enter into the change order and authorizes school district Superintendent of Schools to execute the change order and such other documents as may be necessary to effectuate the change order. This is in relation to what Faith was talking about with the drainage situation in the middle school, high school parking lot. So, hopefully, this will remedy that situation. Okay. Do I have a motion? Pete, second. Joel, all in favor?
This will be done before the school year starts, Faith, as the, as the plan?
Yes, it's starting Friday.
Okay. Excellent. Approve a memorandum of agreement. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District approves the memorandum of agreement dated July 2nd, 2025 by and between the District and the Tuckahoe Teachers Association as attached to the official minutes of this meeting and authorizes the superintendent to execute the same. Do I have a motion? Pete, second. Joel, any comments? Okay. All in favor? Approve an MOA. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District approve a memorandum of agreement dated June 2nd, 2025 by and between the District and the Civil Service Employees Association as attached to the official minutes of this meeting and authorizes superintendent to execute the same. So, I have a motion. Pete, second. Joel, all in favor? Okay. Personnel recommendations. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Unit Free School District approve personnel recommendation A through G. Do I have a motion? Pete, second. Joel, any comments?
Nope.
Nope. Okay, all in favor? That's it. Okay, second recognition of the audience. Anybody?
Hi, Seth Mearon, sixty-one Parkview Drive. I just wanted to say, you know, building off of what Allison said about how busy the business office has been, at Cottle, teacher placements and bus stuff, it came out as early, if not earlier than it's ever come out since I've been in the district. And so I just wanted to express gratitude to everybody for all the work over the summer to do that. I know it's a lot, and it makes a big difference, particularly for youngest kids, to help sort of start getting them excited about coming back to school. So just wanted to express my gratitude to the team for all the work happening this summer. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Seth. Okay. And I just want to congratulate all of the new teachers that we appointed in tonight's agenda. And last is... Any closing, sorry, sorry.
I think maybe we should introduce one of our teachers. She's here.
Do I go there, or? Oh, I don't know. Okay.
I'm very new. Hi, I'm Dawn, hi, I'm Dawn Barrett. I'm the new band and orchestra person at the Cottle School. I have about seven years' experience as a teacher, as a music teacher, teaching everything and everything, everyone and everything between. So I'm really excited to join Tuckahoe.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, welcome.
Okay. Lastly, is final board comments. Anybody have any final board comments?
No, I don't have any.
Okay. Final comments from the superintendent?
Sure, thank you, President Allen. I think so, that was one of my closing remarks. Congratulations to Ms. Barrett, glad to have you here and joining Cottle as part of our music staff. We're excited to see what you'll do with our students, and welcome to Tuckahoe. You're in a great place. So congrats and welcome to you. And I also want to just echo the sentiments that were said earlier. Thank you to our custodial team, they're working around the clock to get our buildings in shape with additional construction projects and having to work around those things. They continue to work day in and day out to get the rooms ready for the arrival of our students and teachers. So all of their hard work is greatly appreciated. And I also want to show my appreciation as well to Ms. Dunn, who's been a great resource to me coming in as superintendent. So thank you, Ms. Dunn, for being a support to me as a new superintendent, and to Faith as well, Ms. Sparks, who's just been my right hand, left hand, learning the district, and all that she does here is a tremendous asset to all of us. So thank you to Faith.
Okay. A motion to adjourn the meeting. Joel, second. Pete, all in favor? That's it. Enjoy the rest of your summer.